All right, I will go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. Do we have any adjustments or additions? Seeing none, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We'll proceed accordingly. So next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Anybody have any adjustments? I didn't have either, any either, so.
No.
I move that we approve the minutes for the December eighteenth Planning Commission meeting as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so tonight on our agenda, we've got three discussion items. We'll start with the first one, the annual goals and Planning Commission ordinance. Pat, you gonna walk us through this?
Yes, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission terms in Victoria usually end in March, and so all new Planning Commission members would start in April. When I worked at the City of Excelsior, they would have an annual meeting at that first meeting, and at that annual meeting, they would select a chair, a vice chair. They would talk about the goals for the year, and they would look at the bylaws, if they hadn't changed any bylaws. And it was actually written in the code, so it gave staff basically a timeline to shoot for. Now, sometimes I got really busy, and that timeline came and went, and nobody, you know, slapped my hand or anything, but it was nice because it was in the code so that, you know, every staff member who worked there would know, hey, we need to do this annual meeting in March typically. So that was one idea. And then looking at the bylaws, I was thinking, do we want to change any other bylaws? So another one I was, may want to include is just a statement, a simple statement about needing a quorum. Need a quorum to actually have a meeting, and then you need a quorum throughout the meeting to actually vote on a topic. So that, I threw that in there as well. And I also should apologize because I thought I had the proposed changes in the staff report that went out, but apparently I didn't. I realized that about five thirty today. So I made a hard copy for everybody, and the proposed changes are in red. And then the, the last one that I was gonna suggest that having a, some language about the roles of the chair and vice chair. And that's, the that's the, actually, if you look at the handout, it's letter A. Talks about the role of, of the chair and vice chair. So with that, the also talking about some of the goals, and what I did here was, I kinda, just to get an idea of what's coming up as well. So I thought I'd present that tonight. So in your next meeting, docs would be coming back to you. Hardcover would be coming back to you. There's two possible sketch plans. That, I never know when they're actually gonna come, but that would be the soonest. And then the Arbor Woods rezoning that we're talking about later today. Again, what we try to do, what I'll try to do is, if there are, is a larger agenda, I'll try to push off some of the things that don't need to be done to the following month. So we'll see what these sketch plans come through. In March, we have the thirteen acre, half acre concept plan, small cell wireless, and then the shoreline management ordinance that we've been working on for a while. And then in April, I, we'll probably have shoreline ordinance as a discussion in March, and then we'll have the public hearing in April, and then accessory structures. For goals, again, because we just completed the comprehensive plan, we have a long list of goals in the next couple of years to help make some changes to the code to implement that comprehensive plan. So in two thousand nineteen, so far, this is the list I have. The small cell wireless, the aesthetic standards must be adopted by April fifteenth, so that's kinda higher on the priority list. Downtown design guidelines, the, we have existing ones that are pretty good, but we could use some diagrams and guidelines on parking and maybe signs. And I thought that would be appropriate before we start discussing the thirteen and a half acre development because the downtown guidelines would be very similar to that development. Parking ordinance, we just completed a task force, and one of their recommendations is to revise the parking ordinance because there's some confusion on what the parking requirements are for the downtown. Downtown West, that is gonna be something that we're gonna have to hopefully, crossing our fingers, work through this year, the design and, and regulation of that. Subdivision ordinance, and then the subdivision design guidelines, which include trails, berms, landscaping along arterial roads. What's the requirements? And then, next year, some of the other things that we need to do to implement the comprehensive plan. This one, the, the first one isn't something that needs to be done for the comprehensive plan, but it should be done for the sanity of Paul and myself, and that's the administrative chapter of the zoning ordinance. The P U D ordinance could be revised, and then the non-conforming ordinance and home occupations. There's, right now, we don't have any regulations on home occupations, even though we allow them. So with that, we let the Planning Commission discuss the changes to the bylaws. If you want to make any changes that staff suggested, and then if you have any comments, questions about the goals in the next couple of years.
Thank you. Well, should we break this up? Should we start with the, start with the bylaws? Anybody have any?
I like it.
Concerns? You know, Pat, when I was listening to you talk through the, some of the adjustments, I I was like vaguely remembering, at least addressing some, potentially addressing some of this language, and I'm wondering if it if it goes back to when we, I thought there was an official action with regard to the size of the Planning Commission, the number of members, and then the philosophy of the, of the alternate members. And I thought that there was some action that was taken with regard to city council, and so I'm, I'm just wondering if that's true. So if there's the potential, was this, is there a section in our ordinance that has already started to address? Like, what made me think of it is like the quorum.
I totally, I totally agree with you because we had this conversation about a year ago, and went from five to seven, got the alternates. I think that this is, a lot of the stuff, even on this, our goals list, is stuff we as a group, I believe, have collectively spoken about the last two years. Where I think we're just revisiting and polishing, I'm assuming.
Well, so I'm, I'm supportive of it. I'm just wondering, making sure, making sure that some of this language doesn't already exist somewhere. And of course, I didn't read the entire
Right.
set of ordinances to find it, but maybe you have, maybe you took a quick look and didn't, didn't really see any prior reference to our governance.
Well, maybe it's somewhere else, but it's not in the section that deals with the Planning Commission. So this is the most updated section.
Okay.
That, because it talks about the alternates already. So this, this has been changed and is reflective of the most up to date.
So this is an all completely new language?
Just the red stuff, right?
The red stuff is the new stuff, is, is new.
Okay.
So you could see under section one oh one dash twenty-four D, where it has alternate members, that code was changed in June eleventh, two thousand eighteen. So that's how recent this language is for the entire section, and then what I'm recommending is changing the red.
Thank you. That, that's totally my misunderstanding of the, the red versus for some reason, I was thinking this was a totally new set of text.
Oh, no.
With red just being some edits or
Sorry, no, I
misunderstanding. We're, you're on the right track.
Was a great question, though. There's a lot of the stuff we're looking at, and stuff that we have discussed at some, at some point with the previous staff.
Yeah. And I think this is good clarity, clarity because historically, it's been a little loose. I mean, at least for the nearly nine years that, that I've been a part of this, there's been some years where we've elected a, a new chair, other years where we haven't either because we were, we were busy, or there were other reasons or other, other staff turnover. And so I think having a codified is, if anything, serves as a, as a good reminder. And there's also been periods where we've had a, a chair identified, but never thought to identify a vice chair. And then suddenly, there's business travel, or for some reason, a chair's not there, and, and the first order of business that night is to try to figure out who's gonna be the vice chair. And quickly elect someone so that they can run the meeting, and it may just happen to be whoever was there that night, sort of, you know, sort of a thing. Sorta, sorta have that in place, I think, is a, is just good planning. Any other questions or thoughts about that?
Just one thing on the wording, and this is the first time I'm reading the red stuff, so if I'm misinterpreting something, I'll apologize in advance. But it says the terms will last for one year, right? And then, and, and until their successors are appointed and assume office. So is, just for clarity purposes, is that saying that the chair and vice chair will get, will be, get one, a one-year term? And then a next year, another vote will happen? Is that what that means?
Correct, correct. But what that says is, and means that if you don't do it within one year, their term continues until you elect another chair or vice chair. So say we get busy in that April meeting, and you don't get to it to May, it's, it's not like your term ends then.
Right, so in April of next year, in April of next year, if we don't have a meeting, then the current chair and, or vice chair will just continue?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that language allows for the overlap if there's new people coming on board as well. Right, if, if, if terms are ending of various Planning Commission members, and it, it takes a few meetings before the new Planning Commission members can be on board, before it makes sense then to nominate and, and vote for the chair at that time, that spans the gap, right?
Right.
May I ask a question? What is the council member liaison?
So that is a provision in there that says that the council may select a liaison to serve with, on the Planning Commission.
Okay. Is that on a temporary basis?
Yeah, typically, it's every year, but they've cho, historically, apparently chosen not to select a liaison for the Planning Commission.
So I can add that for the first three to five years that I was on the Planning Commission, of the, of the nine total, so, you know, could be, it was back that far in time. We did have a liaison identified, and so a city council member attended every Planning Commission meeting. And that, that changed from year to year, and the primary purpose was, they were hearing things firsthand, and then characterizing the discussion at the next, at the next city council meeting in a way that's different than just the minutes capturing it. And that time, there was a particularly significant moment of development, and the council was interested, and so they, they attended. But I think it, there got to be a point in time where, for whatever reason, either we weren't as busy, or they got more busy, and they decided that they weren't gonna attend regularly, and they, and they told the Planning Commission that. But at that time, I remember they, they still welcomed us to still be a liaison and attend the city council meetings to hear things firsthand and contribute if, for when it was appropriate. So it seems to vary based on their interest, but that, I can appreciate the provision, being here because it, it leaves it open if so desired.
Is the annual meeting different than the normal once-a-month meeting?
Right, so the annual meeting we'll have typically in April, and we'll go through the goals for the year, elections for the chair and vice chair. And then if you, typically, what, what I would do is I would draft out, or I'd print out the bylaws when I was working in Excelsior, and include that in the annual meeting, just so that you guys can refresh it and say, do you guys want to add anything, make any deletions? It's a good time just to double check.
But it can be a part of the April meeting, can it not?
Yeah, it can be.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be another day necessarily.
Correct.
I'm curious if, if this was, if the bylaws is, is an appropriate place to just reference the importance of Planning Commission members being thoughtful about sharing when they won't be able to attend meetings, and just referencing being considered of that, or even a timeline notice period if they can't attend, just for planning purposes. Is this, if, if, if it's not the appropriate place, that's fine, but
I could, I'll look and see what other cities do.
Yeah.
I always like doing that.
My initial thought is that, I think that's a good suggestion, but it's like, that's a cultural item. You know, like sort of our, our mutual respect for each other, and our, and our commitment, as opposed to a, an ordinance
Right.
like requirement.
Sure.
Because how do you enforce it? And also, there's also, I think, even though I believe that we all respect each other in a way that, you know, will give as much notice, you know, both to help city staff plan, but also for the alternate scenario to be prepared and, you know, review. It's still a volunteer position, and things still come up.
Sure.
You know, it, it's not unusual for someone to learn about a business trip the day before, right, and unplanned, or other family commitments. And so I think if you codify it through the ordinance, it, it becomes a little awkward in terms of what, what does that mean if you're not meeting your obligation?
Yeah.
Right, is it, you know, are we trying to make it grounds for dismissal because someone had a sick child?
Sure.
Not so much, you know. Does it put staff in a difficult position because maybe there's not a quorum? I know that there were times where attendance was getting light because we do need a quorum, and so as soon as one or two Planning Commissioners would notify city staff that they can't make it, I've seen it in the past where city staff gets nervous and sends out an email to the remaining commissioners, like, we're getting, you know, we're close to not meeting a quorum. You know, let us know as soon as you know if you can't make it, because we would then cancel the meeting, or postpone it, or whatnot.
There's a question I've got, and just looking at this and looking at what's currently going on, I guess my term expires this year, but that meeting's not till March. Do these April and March dates have to be more in sync? I guess the group interview for the council is March for Planning Commission moving forward, but if we, leadership meeting is in April, what if somebody's term gets extended and they're, they don't get reelected or reappointed? Is that a problem? Am I reading it wrong?
Say it again.
The, two of us, our terms expire this session.
Right.
And I'm not sure who's reapplied or reapplied, but I've been told by Cindy I have to attend the council meeting for a group interview, March twenty-fifth, I believe. But we're, we're calling for annual meeting in April.
Which is after that.
You're right, never mind, it's, I'm with
I suspected you, you were, you were
Yeah, you're right, thank you.
So the intent is what you're, you're after is that
Is already there.
The, the annual meeting and the election of officers happens
After the
after, if there's a transition, either because
Based on that, I'm not gonna get reappointed. It's been a long day. Thank you for the clarification.
But, but what's nice about that is, you know, I suppose another way you could do this is do it in, in January every, every year, but that's sort of arbitrary based on calendar, and not really, I mean, the, just like a fiscal year, like our term is based on, on March, right? So rather than setting a bunch of goals and electing officers in, in a January timeline, only to then potentially have to change it in April if, you know, either those officers are no longer part of the Planning Commission, or new faces, new goals, new input. Seems right to like do all that once you have, you know, the new term just started in, in April, right?
Unless you move both up.
So, Laura?
Unless you moved both timelines up.
Well, but I think that there's, the term is tied to, I think, other committees and
They do them all at one time.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
They do them all at one time. Yeah, Excelsior, their term limits were February, so they did it in March, the annual meeting. But, yeah, that'd be
In regard to Laura's point about timely informing of your absence, under quorum, couldn't we just add a sentence? That absences should be reported, intended absences should be reported in a timely manner, or something like that? I know we all assume that will be that way, but it's not a bad idea to put it there.
I mean, I see, I see the point, though, of it being subjective and cultural. I totally see that as well, so
A timely cover set, I think.
But to Jeff's point, timely, then like happens.
I know. Well said. Could've said something else. That's right.
I guess the thing with the bylaws, though, they're very black and white, you know, and inserting that is somewhat gray.
True.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
And to insert language that's equally gray, you know, by saying, you know, saying something like timely. I mean, that's, that's almost as good as saying nothing at all, because like, what is, what is ti, what does timely mean? I mean, you, you make a good point.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. The one nice thing about, about adding some language is that it, it basically implies like importance.
Or responsibility.
But I'm, I'm just not sure that codifying wouldn't really seems like a cultural norm. And, you know, mutual respect and comes with sort of the acceptance of the role is necessary. Because it would, it, it may potentially feel awkward among a lot of this language that is in fact black and white, and has to do with statutes and governance, and, you know, how we, how we govern ourselves. Any other, other question? I'm feeling pretty good about, about the language. Sounding like there's any specific changes that we want to make. Is that something that we actually need to vote on, or is this a feedback item that
Well
to then bring back for formal?
I'm not sure if, I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe it's not in the zoning ordinance, so it doesn't need a public hearing. So if you want, you can take a vote for, in, in case it doesn't need a public hearing, but it would have to go to the city council for them to amend it because it's in part of the city code. So that would be their, your way of saying you recommend these changes. You can, you could take that vote, and if I just figure out in the next month that it does need a public hearing, I should have looked at that, and I apologize. Then we'll just come back and do it again next month.
Should we do that now before we move on to the next item?
It'd be a good idea.
So does it require a motion?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and, and move that we approve the adjusted language as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, so unanimous support?
Thanks.
So the next, the next piece is your, your overview of, of the annual goals, and, and my sense is that you're, you're looking for feedback if there are other thoughts that anybody on the Planning Commission has that might be missing here, or
If you want to add any more.
Additional, yeah, priorities, or
Correct.
Does anybody have any initial thoughts or reaction to? I mean, certainly, there'll be more that we discuss this, this coming year than what's, what's here, right? But these are some things that, at least from a staff perspective, you know is on the, on the docket for the
Correct.
twelve months, yeah.
Is it appropriate to ask about some of these goals that are currently under work?
Sure.
First, the definition, just because I'm not that bright. Small cell wireless.
So the wireless companies are going more toward, towards a small cell wireless and, and light poles, and utility poles in multiple locations versus a one big cell tower that's on a water tower, and having fewer of those. So they're going to more of the scattered sites?
Pat, is this what you would define as five G?
I don't know. I don't even know, own a cell, a smartphone.
I, I thought, I thought that, I thought that by definition, five G had a, had a denser spacing of, of cells, and it functions in a slightly different way, requiring this as an implementation.
It could.
Make people help.
Yeah.
So we passed something like this in Falcon Heights last year. And so what it was explained to me was that what they're doing, for example, in Falcon Heights, we have Larpenter and Snelling, which is a huge traffic area, eighty thousand A D T. There's also large buildings, and so there's so much bandwidth requirement in that area, they need fiber connection to these small areas, usually at about thirty feet in radius around the actual unit. And that's just a way to control all these micro-high usage, which sounds like kind of oxymoron, but, you know, there's these small areas with high bandwidth requirements. So we're talking about high-rise developments, traffic such as like your GPS utilizing the map services. And so there, a better way for the utilities to be able to get that sort of, and they're really accurate about how much they need. And so they only put it where, exactly where they think they need it. It's like thirty or forty degrees of where they actually target for a specific area. Some newer technologies have a little broader area, but they do that so they can get like, you know, say, an office park area, so they can kind of narrow in on those high-traffic usages, so.
And Excelsior did this as well, and it's my understanding that the state government adopted some reg, some legislation that would allow this to occur, and, but they also gave cities some time to come up with Some legislation that would allow this to occur and, but they also gave cities some time to come up with some ordinances that would kind of help regulate it. Because otherwise you're gonna have these little small cell wirelessly, not only on the light poles, but you could have you, the utility boxes there on the sidewalks. Scattered throughout downtown, so that's again why it's a high priority.
You, you think it's mostly restricted to downtown or is this a community wide?
It could be community wide, but I think the impact is greater in the downtown.
I traveled the Phoenix recently and they look like palm trees, that little metal palm leaves coming out of their little wireless towers down there. Goofy, but that's their.
Or you think that's their design guideline to intentionally look?
I am not sure, I'm just looking at.
Or do you think we're gonna have?
Wondering, okay.
Or do you think we're gonna have palm trees?
I think we have palm trees in Victoria.
Lovely. So we'll talk about like the maintenance and how that's managed long-term in March.
Correct.
Okay.
I like it.
How does there? I'm trying to remember what the, what the actual final, final, final implementation of the long-term comprehensive plan is. You know, there's, there's a series of reviews before it comes back for formal. Can you?
Sure.
What's that timeline again?
So the city council last month. Passed a resolution to formally submit it to the Met Council for their review. Met Council will review it, most likely they're gonna say it's incomplete and we need to add some more information to it. They've been saying that to a lot of the cities. The consultant will add the information to make it complete, send it back to the Met Council, the Met Council will officially say, yes, we support this, this document. Once they do that, then it goes to the city council and the city council again can make changes if they wanted to, or they adopt the, what was submitted. So, and most likely it's gonna be in spring. For, when it comes back to the city council for their official adoption.
Well, spring of this year.
Yes.
With, with both the re-review.
Correct.
Everything by my counsel, okay. So, that's good, cause the reason I was asking that is I was just trying to think of. How swiftly do you feel like the city needs to act in response to that? You know, one, once that gets approved in the spring, you know. In my mind, it likely triggers a round of ordinance updates to align with some of the aspirational goals of the long-term comprehensive plan. Do, do we think that there's likely some additional topics that would fall out from just the long-term comp plan that would fall into this calendar year?
Right, so I kind of listed the things that I think that need to be changed to help implement the comp plan. But if there's anything that you guys think that, that you know better than, you know, cause you've been here longer than I have, that, that you know that the ordinance is deficient about. And that, that does need changed, then yeah, that'd be great to know and we can add it.
And, and maybe. So I was trying to reflect on, you know, some of the, the big ideas of long-term comp, comp plan and some of the goals, you know, so there's like some of the green belt type language. Maybe, maybe you're capturing that here with regard to some of the, you know, subdivision design guidelines, including trails. But I, I don't know if there are other ordinance sections in response to, you know, some of the aspirational goals that came out of long-term comp plan with regard to that. Just in terms of how to. How to encourage, how to implement, you know, how to inter, interconnect, you know, some of the various aspects of the whole green belt idea.
Right, so it's gonna be, that green belt idea is gonna be implemented through a variety of measures. One of them is the steep slopes wooded area that we're still working with the city council to adopt. It's, that's like a minor piece to, but be able to preserve those steep slopes. Another one is the subdivision ordinance, making sure that the. Roads and the, the trails are, are the sufficient. And then the other one is just the PUD ordinance too. Again, I know that, that the person who sat in my seat is a little different than what I would recommend. But I think that PUD ordinance is a very good tool to. Get developers to make some changes to include trails that aren't included. By making some, you know, what, what makes best for the community, so it's a lot of negotiation essentially. So that's another tool and then the other, some of the other tools aren't really part of the ordinance and that is getting the Minnella Creek Watershed District. Actively involved with reviewing these sketch plans and to see if there's any particular. Parcels that they need to acquire, you know, if we can't get the developers to, to put in additional trails or make the trails wide enough. Through the PUD and there, but there is some, something that the Minnella Creek Watershed District thinks strongly believes that should be preserved, maybe they go out and buy the land. So there's a number of things that need to be done to implement that green belt concept.
That's good. Another one that comes to my mind. Somewhat related to the downtown design guidelines. And because it's also linked to your downtown west bullet point, you know, like. Do the current central business district guidelines? You know, do they encompass the vision for the thirteen and a half acres or is? That'll be a good discussion to sort of evaluate whether or not, you know, now if you take a fresh look at the central business district guidelines, that might have been created at a time that thought of. You know, more finite footprint of the downtown proper, but now, you know, there's this, there's this more of an appetite for the mixed use type development and encouragement of that. That'll be interesting. I remember there was a time when we reviewed the central business district guidelines and questioned whether, how that applied to other. More commercially focused developments like further down south. And I think there was an intention to have some distinction, like there, there are rules that apply to the central business district that truly. Should be unique to the central business district and not necessarily just apply to any other little commercial node that might develop over time. But I guess that'll be a good discussion point, I think in that context, but the other was with the. Did we add some, some new? In the zoning plans for the long-term comp plan when we get, we start talking a lot more about flex and some of that. Should that be a part of the discussion? Right, is there, do we have any guidance for some of the flex, flex development or? Other types of guidance that we're giving in the long-term comp plan?
I think that'd be good, but I don't, don't think we need to do that this year. The downtown guidelines, I think is a good idea to do this year because of the thirteen and a half acres potential development. But I think that the flex and the commercial, I think it's a good discussion to have and maybe we put that just as a, in two thousand twenty as a placeholder. Type of a thing.
Though you do have some. Some preliminary plats coming up before us in the, in the coming month or two, right? With the two large, two large properties down towards the south that.
Right.
That was starting to influence the discussion around where's flex, where's high-density residential, where's medium-density residential? So it might, it might be upon us sooner than we, than we think, and so that's the question is like, if, if it's gonna sneak up on us. It's really hard to sort of retroactively put some guidelines in place if, if that's important. So maybe we want to think about that timing, but I'm not sure what those, what those proposals are gonna look like and if that's really true there. What, once was the time where there was sort of a mix of impacts, so.
My gut instinct is that they aren't gonna be developing south of the railroad tracks anytime soon. Because it's a, that developer is a residential developer, it's not a commercial office developer. And so I think. It's gonna be a, a good year before they even get to the developments off the railroad tracks, but you're right that if we do start getting wind that. A office developer is coming in, then yes, we need to push that schedule up sooner.
A lot of it's based on the utilities.
Right.
What's the update on that, have I brought it up as far as the pipe getting down to the south?
So the, the council approved the, I think SRF is the consulting firm, it's an eighty thousand dollar contract to design it. And then once, basically it's given their approval of, of putting it in and it kind of goes hand in hand of. You want a developer that is gonna be developing it, it's one of those chicken and egg things, type things, but you don't, so. So that when you do put it in, you can recoup your costs, but the developer's not gonna do anything unless you, we put it in as well.
I've seen the surveyors out there a lot this past month.
Right, so that's what they're doing, designing it right now.
So that means that they won't be put in until there's a real true developer?
Well, we're trying to work it together.
Okay.
Step by step. Right.
It's my understanding you're gonna run a pipe all the way down basically to the tracks, put a lift station in to pump things back up, that everything will trickle downhill to that, then come back.
Correct.
It'll be fun to watch it grow, it'll grow fast once it goes.
Right.
Good reason to get ahead of it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Especially the commercial, in my opinion, cause that's gonna be the last stop. Am I right?
Right.
How difficult is it to get that pipe under the tracks or through the tracks? Has anybody ever dealt with that?
I've heard it's not an issue.
Okay.
From engineering.
To Jeff's point, it might be here before we know it. It should be exciting.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion items?
I like the comments you made about the design concept, I think the southern commercial node will clearly look differently than our central business district. Central business district has a historic, small-town feel, I think the southern node is gonna be much more commercialized, modern, more current.
Yeah, now, now's a good time to reevaluate that, right? This is the type of thing that we would expect as a city to do every, every ten years when you get a new comp plan is, are there any? Things that we could not have envisioned ten years ago, you know, when the previous comp plan was established and what are the, the tweaks to, to guide, you know, so it's sort of. Sort of like, there's so much content in the long-term comp plan with regard to the aspirational goals that, you know, have been discussed and, and agreed upon and so it's. It's seeking. How can, how can you enable that to be successful, right, from a, from an ordinance type perspective? What's nice about our, our role is that we can, as we encounter various developments, we can always make reference to the long-term comprehensive plan to guide sort of recommendations and. In decisions that we make, cause I think that's at the core of what our responsibility is, but. In terms of setting expectations, you know, you, you can't always expect developers to read that document and, and catch, catch on to some of the. Intent behind what we're doing and so catching the ordinance tweaks that help enable that is a good thing.
I like Ford did talking about the thirteen and a half acres and, and really asking the questions about. Do we really want this to be zoned CBD? Do we, can, can we change that zoning? Does it ha- I mean, does it kind of be a completely different zoning? And, and if, if so, what are the pros and cons? I don't know, I mean, I, I just, I, I don't know what they are and so I'm curious. Cause I, I envision that completely different than here. I just do. I don't, I don't think it'll look like this whatsoever. Could be wrong.
I think that'll make for a good discussion.
Nice, CBD, what is, so just meaning?
Central Business District.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the, so the central business district has its, not only is it zoned in that way, but it has its own set of design guidelines. So whereas, you know, like the residential districts, there, there's not a lot of guidance about, you know. What materials are allowed and what, what colors or the mix or the durability or the, you know, overall appearance and streetscape and, you know, so there's all kinds of requirements. Specific to just the central business district that. Attempts to set up the framework for, you know, a, a consistent. Durable, walkable, you know, there's, there's several aspirational goals that sort of dictate why there's requirements for certain materials and you can't use other materials or. So I think that to your, to your point, you know. There's been that study that's been done previously and so this discussion point will be good to sort of evaluate what you're, like what you're saying, the pros and cons, like is there. Is there strength in what started and, you know, a desire to sort of build up on that to sort of maintain that unique identity? Potentially to avoid some of the cons that might be, you know, does the new portion of development? Start to resemble a more traditional suburban development in a way that's different from what? The central business district of Victoria is today. Or does. The ability for it to be something different, but guided in a way that sort of makes it special and unique in its own right. And linked by proximity, but not necessarily by character, that, that could be a, and there's probably a couple other perspectives, but I think that's what'll make that discussion fun. To sort of evaluate those, those different perspectives.
To your point, is there flexibility on it? For having it be a different plan or is it pretty much?
Well, I think, I think there's a, there's been a study for how that would be developed, but I think that's, that's what this, this discussion item is, is. You know, today. It's zoned as central business district and there, there are standards which, which apply to that. Is that, is that true? The thirteen and a half acres is currently zoned as CBD?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think that's the opportunity for this group and then of course as it goes to city council is to. Reevaluate whether that's the right thing to do. If we do nothing, then the CBD rules will apply to that out of, out of necessity, but I think there is flexibility in. Evaluating whether or not, how those rules, rules apply, right? I mean, is that part of, at the core of the discussion that you added on for the?
Right, part of it is, is looking at the design guidelines of the downtown and seeing if we want to make any changes to those. And then if we want to look at those and use those for the thirteen and a half acre. And do we want, because ideally we want to get ahead of the developer to give them some parameters, some ideas of what we envision this area to be. You know, the buildings, what the, like Jeff said, what's the building materials, are they any different, the design of the buildings, are they any different? That, that will help them come up with a plan that is consistent with what the city wants.
Setbacks would be included in design guidelines as well.
Correct. Yep.
Can there be two central business districts?
Well, you can definitely have different looks, like Jeff talked about, you can have. Two separate business districts that have a different character. That is just connected.
So it's.
Definitely.
So it's not a proximity thing then, it's just strictly based on, on the zoning perspective?
Right.
Yeah, the proximity comment is that it's zoned CBD today, you know, as, as a contiguous zone.
Right, because there's some question at the council level, right, because there's a, a split, right, there's some privately owned property between the two, if I'm recalling correctly. So because of that privately owned property, if we're having a central business district discussion. And when we talk about proximity, of course, everything goes back to parking, right, or, or a lot of it goes back to parking. So if you're gonna say the parking impacts on this part versus that part, how does that come in? That's just kind of what's coming in off the top of my head.
Right, and I think where we were starting is, you know. Do the rules apply unanimously, you know, because today it's all zoned CBD. And do the rules all, all continue to apply equally throughout the CBD, whether it's parking, whether it's. Design standards or material standards, all those kinds of things. And if, if the desire is for them not to be treated the same, then I guess that, that's part of the discussion is, how, how do you? How do you do that? Is it actually two different zoning districts so that you can marry up the, you know. Is it actually two different zoning districts so that you can marry up the, you know, very different standards among them? Or there's probably other mechanics that'll, that allow you to, you know, within the Central Business District have some delineation around it, you know, to be distinct in different areas. I, I don't know, I don't know that we have to answer that tonight, but I think that'll be part of the, what are the goals? And then, you know, how do we execute it?
Well, proximity, proximity would have to be a big part of that, because we're talking about that in two or three different parts of the bullet point, and part of the goal for nineteen, right? I mean, if we're gonna talk about the design guidelines, do we match the two? If we're talking about parking, do we match the two or include them in one, right? Because of the minimums that are set up based on our parking ordinance now, right? Downtown West is, obviously, that's what we're talking about. So we're talking about co-mingling of, of these goals, right? So do you want, if we're talking about specifically about the goals in terms of how you would act, or what you would actually call a goal, do you wanna call it one big one or three different ones? Right, when you're defining goals?
Are you suggesting we have a single all-night meeting to address all these topics?
I would love nothing more than to have an all-night meeting about that.
No, would you, you make a goo- you make a good point, though, that like, you know, staff is gonna have to be careful about the order in which you choose to, to bring this to us, right? And there's also the reality that it likely won't and can't be sequential. Like you, we're, we're not likely able to solve one entirely one night before moving on to the next. So there's probably some discussion item type agendas, you know, where there's some consensus building, say on the design guidelines, and then the next meeting, some talk about the parking ordinance, and we might see the design guidelines come back at a, at a future meeting to finalize it, informed by downtown west in the parking meeting.
Exactly my point, right?
Am I on the right track there, that there's, because these things are so intertwined, that there might be some shared discussion among them?
Yes, yep, and there may be some tweaking going back and forth as well.
Right.
And then.
Sorry.
To the tweaking point, you know, March is the, the concept plan meeting, uh, with that developer, right?
Right.
So I'm a little concerned about how large the tweaks might be as a result of our discussions.
And to that point, they're really not, because it's not defined, how can you meet with a developer that, where we haven't even made that decision yet?
So, o- one, we, we don't wanna, um, slow down the process of the developer. That's like the number one goal for this one. And the concept plan that would be coming back in, was it, uh, March? In March is really truly a concept plan. They're not gonna be talking about the design of buildings, setback to buildings, uh, just talking about pretty much land use and just saying, this is feasible. This is the, this is the vision that we see. And then they start, okay, let's get an agreement, a, a purchase agreement with the city, and to give us, again, additional time, now that we found out that it's financially feasible, it markets feasible, give us another time to come up with the day actually plans. So that would mean that in the spring, we would start having that discussion of the design guidelines for the downtown and also for the thirteen and a half acres, so that we can give them some input along the way, is this what our vision of that area is? Give them feedback, so while he's working with the design, the, getting the details, he knows what we're gonna want.
You used a term in the very beginning of this discussion about the historical buildings in our downtown, in our Central Business District. We won't have that in the thirteen point five acres. So that distinguishes the CBD from other commercial developments, I think. And it's a term that maybe we can embellish upon and use to our advantage.
I think, I think that's fundamentally true.
Yeah.
But there's also brand-new buildings downtown that, that have, that have been constrained to Central Business District standards in an effort to blend in character for a common desired outcome, right?
That can be a design standard that we carry through.
Well, and I, I think that's the question, right? So it's, it's, it's less about the actual vintage or age of structures and the, you know, and the resulting character that that does, but it's more about, um, what some of the goals, you know, of the, of the character or materiality or, you know, when you, when you look at those material standards, you know, it's, clearly doesn't want all glass, all glass buildings, right? Of a, of a certain time, we used to see, you know, various commercial or office buildings that were just corner-to-corner glass, right? There's restrictions on how much glass, and there's, there's guidance in terms of using materials that are durable, like brick and stone, as opposed to, um, you know, materials that if left un, unkept or, you know, somebody moves out of the building, that it's gonna make our downtown, you know, feel like a hole in the wall, because the materials, the cladding is gonna deteriorate and paint's gonna fall off and, you know, we, we've seen, um, historically, buildings that have not been built with durable materials, fall apart, and so it's recognizing that there's val- from a city's perspective, there's value in guiding these things for a common desirable goal.
Style and design.
And, and style and design, right? There, there is some guidance, um, but that's unique to the Central Business District, because the city has, you know, through the long ter- if you're looking at the long-term comprehensive plan aspirational goals, there's, you know, there, in the past, has been some expression of a desire to, to make this unique, and the only way you make it unique is that you make th- those intentions clear, and you guide things like style and how much of it, you know, there's guidance that restricts you from just taking any single material and, and just sort of making a, a plain vanilla box, there's character desired.
Sorry to interrupt, it's like what we did with the old Creamery building, right?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we had input or made recommendations based on style and design, right? What, you know, where, how, you know, how they were gonna treat their disposal areas and deliveries and things like that. So, and, and that was where our recommendations kind of, a- and I know it's not the only thing, I suppose, uh, using the cliche now, it's styles, styles and design, but that's how we matched it all, so that it would be, you know, of value and look like everything, not look like everything, it was in my head, coming out of my mouth very well. But i- it's, it, it goes back to the overall plan.
So we should all do our homework and read that part of the zoning ordinance before our next meeting.
That's a good, good instruction.
I surely haven't read it yet.
I'd like to look deeper into the use, the use section within CBD. I think that's gonna be really important.
Any other questions or topics?
We had a good head start on April's meeting.
Yep. All right. Maybe we did dive a little deeper than Pat wanted us to.
All right, that's four.
Thank you so much for giving some direction, some things to look forward to, so we can do some homework ahead of time if needed.
So we already took the motion on the, uh, bylaws, and it sounds like you just wanted comment and feedback on, on the annual goals portion, so you don't need a motion for any of this.
Nope.
Okay. Everybody okay if we move on then? Item B on the discussion items is the Arbor Woods development.
Chair of Planning Commission, thank you. Uh, today, um, I'd like to discuss an issue that we came across concerning the Arbor Woods development. And for today, we're just looking for a discussion on this particular issue. And we have up on the screen right now, a map of that particular development. A little bit of background, um, Arbor Woods was approved on September twenty-second, twenty-fourteen, as a fifteen-lot subdivision. Eight lots have been developed and seven lots remain undeveloped. Staff was contacted by Mr. Jim Donnelly, a potential purchaser of a home in the Arbor Woods development. He had questions about the usable space on the property and received mixed messages from the builder. His questions centered on the impervious surfaces and what was allowed. Staff informed him that they had a thirty percent of the lot, um, for development per the R zoning district standard referenced in our development spreadsheets. Mr. Donnelly stated the builder referenced a different maximum and said that the city was, uh, incorrect. Staff started an investigation on the issue of impervious surfaces in this development shortly after. Staff was contacted by Rick Parker, land manager for the development company, concerning Mr. Donnelly and the question of impervious surface requirements for that development. Mr. Parker stated that he had a matrix that was negotiated with staff in twenty-sixteen that allowed for different impervious surfaces for different lots. Staff informed him that no such agreement had been approved by city council, or at least we didn't have anything on record. Arbor Woods was, uh, approved by resolution on September twenty-second, twenty-fourteen, as a rezoned final plat, CUP and PUD, uh, resolution attached. This process rezoned the property to PUD within our residential impervious surface provision. This set the impervious surface requirement to that of our zoning, which is twenty-five percent. However, in the staff report, um, the stated maximum for impervious surface was thirty percent, and also in our development matrices. At some point after the agreement and PUD was passed around early twenty-sixteen, the terms of the impervious surface maximum were administratively augmented to allow a per-lot maximum of a set square footage and a total development square footage, um, to a percent maximum. Below is the matrix in the development folder that was set, that sets the impervious surface maximum for each lot. Of the eight homes that are built to exceed thirty percent stated in the staff report, the house on lot seven is eleven percent and lot twelve is seven percent. Uh, the matrix here is kind of a snapshot of what we have in file. You'll notice that there are a couple that do have the thirty percent. There's some that are, have an allotment of up to forty-two percent, and those that are limited to almost twenty-five or twenty-four percent. Um, the average of all these is thirty-three percent. For this particular discussion, we have a couple different, uh, proposed options, um, concerning the Arbor Woods development and impervious surface. One proposed, um, suggestion is to amend the PUD and set an impervious surface maximum, um, which isn't explicitly stated in the PUD. Option number two is to keep the R standard enforced at twenty-five or thirty percent and make the current structures legal non-conforming. Um, in the near future, notification will be sent to the property owners, um, with an invitation to join a community meeting to discuss this particular issue. Attached are exhibits one, two, and three, particularly Arbor Woods map, the staff report from, um, eight, nineteen, thirteen, and resolution fourteen seventy-five, which enabled this. And so with that, um, I would, uh, ask for suggestions.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
What does it mean to be administratively augmented? So went through the process and then what happened that caused this, just for reference?
Well, to be, with, with candor, of course. Somebody decided to follow a different rule.
So they went through Planning Commission, went through council, and staff at some point just changed the rule and approved this new concept?
Right, if we're to follow this out to a longer conversation, um, what I got between some email correspondences that were provided by Mr. Parker was that for their development, the homes that they were building weren't fitting on the lots. And so they needed some sort of accommodation to fit those homes, and so accommodations were made. The idea being that if you took the whole subdivision at thirty percent and you divvied out these lots, you'd still have a subdivision of thirty percent development, but have lots of differing developments. This is particularly difficult to administer, because I have to tell one person across the street twenty-four percent and a person on their side forty-two percent. And so that becomes very difficult, and that's what it was, I was running into with this particular setup. Another difficult thing is that it doesn't say in the PUD, oftentimes it'll say, you have an impervious surface requirement of thirty percent, and every lot gets that. This, it just, it pegged it to the R zoning standard. Well, you know, we have records of the R zoning standard, so we know what it is, but that's difficult sometimes, because you wanna set a hard number for you to reference, and sending it to, so for example, if we were to have, changed the R standard to something else, and the question would be, you know, what do we hold them to? It's always best practice to hold them to a set number, and so that's something that we're kind of looking at is.
And that's how I read it earlier today, and it's like, this doesn't make sense, I couldn't figure how it got here, but now, what are our, what are our options? We've obviously, somebody along the way said this is good, you can do this. How do we take that away? Is it even an option?
So, um, before we talk about options, just talk about the context of how we got here, because to me, that, that's still, that still matters in some way, right? Because there are, I, I feel like there's some circumstances that, that got us to this point. I think the, was the city planner at that time in interim?
The individual who guided the PUD was interim. The person that made the matrix, I don't believe, was.
Okay. So I, I only point out the, the interim status, because I, I think that this process might have been influenced by, um, by that aspect of it, that there, that there was somebody that was filling in an interim, interim status. And, you know, even the, the reports, the approach and, you know, formatting was inconsistent with both before and after. So that might have contributed to the oversight that you're talking about in terms of, you know, what was presented versus what then actually was codified.
Right.
In terms of, uh, with the R zoning district being more restricted twenty-five percent, as opposed to the thirty percent that was, part of the staff report and understood and, and part of the discussion and approval.
Right.
So, and then there's also the situation where we've got some homes that are already built and others that are not, right? So, um, on the one hand, if, if you, for those that are built and they're, they're overbuilt, or almost all of them exceed the, the twenty-five or thirty percent, they become neat, legal non-conforming and, and no further improvements will be allowed in the future. Is that, is that true?
So.
Sorry.
That means, so two of the eight exceed the thirty percent. So you could say that the first six were falling under that thirty percent requirement. It's just these last two that exceed the thirty percent. So, um, if you did, if the Planning Commission and the City Council wanted to go with thirty percent, it would just only be two out of the fifteen total that would be non-conforming.
Yeah. Just the other, the other piece of history that I was gonna mention is I, I thought that this was the development that was a little bit unique in that, um, it was a very collaborative process, where the developer at the time had, had come with multiple options. Were you on the commission at that time?
I don't remember the discussion, I just remember reading this today and I just.
Cause, cause I thought there was, there were some challenges with regard to providing that access to the, um, to the two or three lots that are over on Bavaria Road, over to the right.
Right, so the phase two.
Right, but there, but there was some acknowledgement that that was needed, because there was a known setback from Conroy thirteen for where that curb cut could, could happen. So in order for that future phase two development to happen, there was some, um, acknowledgement in this development that that kind of frontage road type of scenario was needed. So that was gonna, that was eating up some of the, some of the property. And I, this also, I remember, included a lot of neighborhood engagement, because there was, um, there was some bald eagle nesting that was happening on site, and so a lot of the, the woodland to the, um, to the west of the site is what sort of, those things combined to, um, make this a PUD in which, you know, it was sort of about the gives and takes, and there was a strong desire to cluster the houses, um, towards the east of the site in a way that protect, that protected the, um, as much of, of the standing trees as, as possible, as well as I think, isn't to the lower left, there's some water holding?
I think that's correct, or some sort of retention, yeah?
Yeah, retention and also, so I only, I only bring up that context, because I remember that this was, um, there was some good intention here to allow the clustering and the unique site features led us down a path where, um, protecting some of the natural features on the site was a strong desire, and the developer actually came with, it was at least two, if not three, unique developments, sort of showing the, you know, some options in terms of how the site could be built to accomplish some of those goals. Planning Commission provided feedback, that was the plan that then went forward and came back for preliminary plat, so. How that influences what we do tonight is, I'm not sure quite yet, but I think it's just good context to sort of add, add to the discussion, because generally, I'm of the belief that, um, because of the unique, unique aspects of the property and the gives and takes throughout the negotiation, I think that looking at this as an overall, from an impervious standpoint, meaning, meaning that with the unique clustering and unique shape of the site and, and trying to work, it seems appropriate to me that there might be impervious surface that apply differently to each lot. Even though you, you might not like that from an administrative standpoint, from like a, a site review standpoint and, and recognize unique features and knowing how this got proposed, if that's what enabled the practical development, as long as the average for the overall site was within the range that was desired, that, that seems appropriate. Because a fixed impervious surface across the board could be impractical based on some of the unique shapes of some of those lots. I'm I'm not committed firmly to that, that position, but that was my initial reaction in reviewing it, just being part of the history. Now, how do you administer that is, is of course the challenge. And I also think the, the built versus not built is a key part of it, right? Like, do you, do you deal with the unbuilt in a different way than, than with the built?
The way that I look at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, in, in maybe what little legal knowledge I have, if we were to get sued, right? The, the homeowners or the property developers already have something in writing that was approved by the city in order to build or develop the land this way. What case would we have to stand on changing what they already have in writing? To me, it was pretty black or white. We told them it was okay regardless of, and I don't know the history, so there might be something there, I don't know. But to me, it's pretty straightforward, black and white. We already told them it was okay through whatever means, and then now we're going to change it.
So what was approved in the ordinance or the resolution was the residential district standards. So when you're, when you're doing the negotiation with the developer and it was approved, what year?
2014.
2014. In the resolution, it said, it was stated that it was going to be the residential district standards, which at that time was 25%. The staff report, which was conveyed to the planning commission and the city council, said it was going to be at 30%. At some time after that, staff came up with this matrix. Now, that matrix isn't legal. So what, whatever, if we change it back to 25 or 30% or some other percentage, we can do that and not be sued because somebody came up with a matrix. Because that's not official. Whatever is adopted by the city council is what has to be regulated.
But the developer was, was relying on this matrix, right?
At some point, correct.
We can only assume that, you know, when they were out pushing the lots, just.
But it was after it was approved by the planning commission and city council that this matrix idea came up, because a couple of years after.
Well, and as a little bit of history, I didn't know the matrix existed. Well, this seems like a strange conversation. But I didn't know that this matrix existed. Yeah, I know, right? Until the developer, or the builder, I should say, emailed it to me. Because I didn't even know it was there. Because we have a list of all 150-plus PUDs that we have in the city. Each one has similar characteristics, setbacks of 30 feet, side setbacks 10 or 8 feet. And then usually an impervious surface, 25, 30, 35, 40, depends on the subdivision. So that's what I use. And there's actually an Arbor Woods and it says 30%. And so when I'm doing my reviews, 30%, okay. I'm not looking at this matrix. Because I don't know it exists. There's no record of me ever having it. There's no reference to it anywhere. And so until they emailed it back to me, I, I, my God, I said, what is this? Why are you giving this to me? And they said, this is what we're using. And I said, I've never, in my planning schooling, planning, I've never heard of such a thing. And that's what sounded the alarm for me.
So is there, is there a question about who generated the matrix and whether or not city staff was a part of it? Or is it clear that city staff at the time, right or wrong, was a part of the creation or agreement upon the, the matrix?
I think we know who made it.
It was a developer and the, and staff at that time came up with the matrix.
Okay. So that
Right.
So that's not, it's not in question that city staff was, was at the time aware of, of this and was a part of that discussion?
Right. And I think, just referring to the conversation that you had and the context that you provided, I'm guessing that that had something to do with it.
Yeah, see, I, see, I'm I can appreciate the perspective that, you know, what, what planning commission recommends and what city council approves is in fact, that's what's approved, right? Like, that's the letter of the law. That's what applies. But it, it gets sticky for me when you have city staff that, you know, like if our, if our development community and our residents of the community can't rely on the advice of city staff because they might be misguided them completely. And they, they go down a path in which they sell property, they build properties, they, they commit to that understanding because they're relying on the representation of city staff. But if all of a sudden now we can't you can't rely on that, that, that's a challenge for me. Combined with the collaborative spirit in which this property was developed, makes that even more sticky in my mind. Right? That there was, throughout this process from start to finish with the developer and, and city staff, planning commission, and council, there was a, a, in my opinion, a real spirit of, of collaboration in terms of this PUD and, and trying to accomplish mutual goals, both gives and takes on both sides. Combine that with, you know, perhaps it was a misstep by city staff at the time. So I, I think those are critical factors and I guess whether we've, whether we follow the, the matrix as it was agreed upon, or there's some consensus, I think we I think it's important to factor those, those other two elements in the discussion that.
So let's go back real quick, Pat. We, we said that it was what got approved through the city council and the planning commission, that's what's legal, right?
Correct.
And then the developer comes back and, and anything else after that on this matrix was, it doesn't really apply. However, there was some contribution by city staff. So if the, if we were to, I'm just trying to paint this picture in my mind, black and white. It's not legal, it's not legal. Or we've agreed, agreed based on the commission, and then something else came in. We say no now, and they said, but you knew about it the whole time city staff was involved. So that's where I'm, if we're going to go ahead and make that adjustment based on change, even though we were representative, you know, to the chairman's point.
One, one additional layer that I think is important to think about is why we have pervious zoning restrictions to begin with. So if there is any concern with, with limiting or adding pervious area based on the environment around it, County Road 18, I think that's another factor too. I mean, if there's not a concern, then in my mind, what was agreed to on a city staff level, I think that has some weight. But I feel as though that, that if there is an environmental impact that is negative based on increasing or decrease in the pervious area, then we have, we have merit to address it.
So going back to Bob's question about the, are we liable? My understanding is no, we're not liable. So if a staff member makes a mistake, it's a, a mistake. They can't come back and sue us because of the, the mistake that somebody made. So we're not liable for that. The question I would ask is, you know, some of these hardcovers that have been approved that are still vacant, lots are 42%, you know, much higher than what we would ever allow. And going back to the the impacts on the adjacent wetland, you know, the, one of the intense intentions of, of limiting the hardcover is that you don't want the runoff to go into the, the adjacent wetland. That'd be my question.
Well, could there be? I mean, I wonder if one compromise, you know, it, it might be acknowledging that this matrix exists and that, that it was, that city staff was involved in the discussion. So could you propose an amendment to the PUD to adopt the impervious surfaces on a per-site basis, you know? But for those unbuilt lots, could you reduce those to a percentage that either is on a per-site basis, you know, in line with the 25 or 30%, or at a minimum, adjust their percentages so that the overall development gets back in line with the originally approved 30%? Because right now, it's at, it's at 33% and you've got how many unbuilt lots? You've got seven unbuilt lots with nothing on them that has an allowance of 37%, 42%? You know, it, it wouldn't seem unreasonable that, okay, for those that are built, generally, basically revise this chart to get the, the overall site percentage back in line with the 30, but allow a per-site based on this matrix as the amendment.
The only thing I'd ask, or the question I had asked there is now are we setting precedent for future site development? If we're going to go ahead and acknowledge that, that cut, custom building has different, you know, different surface allowances?
In my mind, the only thing we'd be setting precedent for is avoiding a staff mistake like this in the future. Right? Because that's, that's the only reason we're we're in this situation. Is that there, is that there was communication that was not in alignment with what was approved. And there's, there's record of it. Right? So it's, it's not setting precedent that in the future, a developer can come and say, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I threw up a bunch of buildings and they don't comply, so let's, let's change everything. I think this is a case where miscommunication, mistakes have been made. There's actually documentation that city staff was involved in those communications, right or wrong. And so trying to find a mutual compromise seems appropriate in this case.
And, and before you, sorry, I just want to talk about Bob's question about precedence. There's no precedence from one PUD to the next. It's all going to be individualized and I wouldn't want to give the planning commissioner, city council, the impression that you have to follow some other PUD that you approved in the past. Because every PUD is going to be unique because based on the location, based on the development, based on a number of factors.
But you could, but you could still use current PUDs as a basis to build the future ones.
Correct. Yeah, I always, I always look at the past PUDs, what have been approved in the past to kind of give you a benchmark of what should be approved. That, that always helps, but it doesn't limit to you or restrict you to one particular PUD standard.
Just a comment. I don't like that we're in this position because it's just very uncomfortable, I think. It was the committee and it was done for whatever reason, it was done and somebody missed up. We've all made plenty of mistakes. If we, from what I'm seeing, looking at the matrix, if we go back to our, our district and cut the percentage back to 30-ish percent, and you look at the allows matrix for footage that's already built, the stuff that's built is in that 4,000 to 4,400 square foot range. If we cut the, the ones that are pushing the 42% as capped at 3,200, you cut that back down to 30%, we're going to be 2,400, 2,500. It's going to have a huge impact on the integrity of this neighborhood. So how do you go back to this guy and the neighbors are already there and the structures are there and say, by the way, we missed up. Too bad, so sad. Here's a new deal. We're just in a really bad spot.
That's a good point. Yeah.
And I may be looking at it incorrectly, but if I cut my square foot, my usable square footage back that significantly from neighboring structures, it's a whole lot different.
Well, what we're good point, but before I go too far down that path, I heard you say that when you do the, the weighted averages here, the overall site as it stands on this matrix is 33%.
Correct.
So we're only.
Allow, I mean, of, of total capacity to build. So if you take all the percentages of total capacity and average it.
We're only talking about a, a total combined reduction of 3% among these seven unbuilt lots.
Right. And that doesn't include chunks of an outlot possibly that would reduce it further, 3%?
I misunderstood. I thought we were going to cut the 42% back to 30%, which would be a huge decrease. I misunderstood and I apologize.
Right. No, when, well, that's one scenario. But the, but the scenario that I was describing as, as a compromise was recognizing that this matrix exists and its total site is at 33% right now. And so to get the total, the total site back in line with 30%, I'm suggesting you amend the PUD to add a revised matrix by reference. And, you know, request that it's shared with all homeowners as part of their, you know, just like we do in the developers agreement and it's part of the disclosure. So particularly for future buyers of these lots, but you do so by revising, reducing the overall site to 30% by any combination of revising the seven remaining vacant lots. So that may mean that instead of 42, 42, and 38, it might be 40, 40, and 37. And, you know, instead of 36, 37, 37, two of them can stay 37. I, I don't know what the math is, but reducing the overall site by, by 3%.
That's a good resolution.
Ideally, you come up with hardcover for everybody. If it's 30%, 33%, whatever it is. So it's not this lot by lot, because it really is difficult to say to one neighbor, you're allowed to 33%, but you're only allowed 30%. And, and it's also administratively, 10 years, 12 years down the road, it's a lot easier to look at one matrix that has a hardcover for all the lots. Now, the, the two, so there's two properties. One is built at 41%, the other one's at 37%. There are, those are the only, right now, are the only two that are above 30%. So if you came up with something at 30% or if you wanted to increase it to 33% as an average, and you said that this is the regulation, those two properties would be considered non-conforming. Basically, what they'd be saying is that they can keep that property. It's a legal non-conforming property because it was approved that way. They can keep that house as is. They just can't expand it. So I'm not even sure if the, the planning commission and the city council wants to allow more than 37% or 41% anyways for a hardcover that is not even close to anything in the city of Victoria elsewhere.
You're going into R2 or R3 zoning standards.
Right. And even if the, if a non-conforming structure, even if it was burnt down, they could still build it back to the hardcover that was permitted. So it doesn't really restrict them much. They could still use it. They just can't expand it anymore.
Well, and for context, if, if nothing is done, they were, they're going to be held to the old R standard, which is going to be even more restrictive.
25%.
25%, right.
I think it's a difficult issue because the advantage of a PUD is we're avoiding cookie cutter developments. We're adjusting the development to the topography, to the eagles in the trees and that sort of thing. And that's such an advantage. And the developer is going to be giving up density because he's providing extra open space on the perimeter of the PUD. And, and each lot should be unique to a point. It'd make it much more attractive.
I mean, I can understand from a, from an administrative standpoint, you guys absolutely don't like the, the per-lot basis. But there's, there's a history in terms of how we got here. And there's also recognizing that because every PUD is unique and it stands on its own, you know, marrying a matrix up with a development on a per-lot basis, you know, it's just like when any, anybody in the. you know, it's just like when any, anybody in this development wants to come and ask about what they can do, you've gotta pull out the records for the, for the development, right? And I think when you look at, so the site, the lots that are vacant, because we start with number one to the right and we go counterclockwise, it's the, it's the square lots. So, all the other lots which, which benefit from a wedge-shaped lot line is, you know, is benefiting from that enlarged site based on that configuration. And so, you're right, if, if lots four, five, six, we wanna get down to thirty percent, that's a quarter of the allowed square foot of the house. So, to your point, you're going from thirty-two hundred-
To three thousand. Thirty, that's at thirty percent. You go to twenty-five, we're at, it's gonna have a huge impact on the integrity of the neighborhood. You get it down to twenty-five hundred. You're gonna have, have you all been in that neighborhood?
Mm-hmm. I swear some of these lots are already built out, though.
I think some of them are, but if you look at, look at the structures you see there. And Elgany is a very nice neighborhood. But this numbers we're quoting right now, if you get on twenty-five hundred square feet, that's the type of house you're gonna stick in between these houses. It's gonna be a little bit unique and different. It's gonna have a huge impact on the flow of the neighborhood. And I totally, you're well pointed. Your comments are fantastic. I hope that we never approve something like this ever again in the future. It's gotta be a nightmare for you guys to manage. And I hope that we never have to have this discussion again in the future. But it's also, I feel personally, if we told somebody, "Yep, you can do this", no matter who it came from or how it came about, we've been through a lot of transition last five years or so, I don't know how we take it back. That's kinda where I started my premise early, just wasn't as well stated as Bob and Jeff brought it forward. What can we do? I can't tell my kids, "Yep, you can do this today," but I feel differently tomorrow because this guy, the sun came on differently today.
And then, when I worked for Falcon Heights, you know, how we subdivided our, our impervious surface was by the number of acres or the partial, part of acres that you had. So, if you had seven thousand square feet, you got forty-five percent or there's, so you, in Falcon Heights, it was really important. Open space was tied to environmentalism. And so, your percentage of your lot was based off of, of the amount of open space that you provided through your development. So, the bigger the lot, the smaller percentage, but the relatively stable amount of developmental space you had. So, I'm not unfamiliar with these types of processes. The issue is how we got to this point and making sure that whatever is done is brought through the correct procedural channels.
My question is, my assumption, and I could be wrong, but my assumption is that the houses that are thirty percent or under were approved under the matrix by staff at thirty percent or under. And then, the ones that, the two that are over were approved by this matrix. So, my assumption, and we'd have to go back and figure out the billing permits when they're approved, but this developer was told that from the time it was adopted at the city council period at thirty percent up until these last two, that it was under, always under thirty percent. And then, all of a sudden, this matrix comes up, then they started discussing it and that's how they came up with these different percentages. So, it wasn't like the, this developer knew that this matrix existed right after it was approved.
Is this all the same developer?
I'm not sure if it's a builder, a different developer and builders. I think it's probably different builders, one developer that was approved.
It's different builders. Biggest thing is gross lot size. We got lots from ten thousand to seventeen thousand square feet.
Well, does, does timing influence that, right? Like, did lots one, two and three get developed? And it was easy to meet the thirty percent because of the wedge shape? And then, they get to lot four, which is the first rectangular lot? And now, they need the forty-two percent.
That's possible.
You develop the end of the cul-de-sac first and you get to lot twelve, which again is the first rectangular site. Oops, we couldn't, we can't build the same sized house that we just put in, you know, those other four or five houses.
And this issue exists all over Victoria with anything with the cul-de-sac. Those, those lots at, at the end of the cul-de-sacs are gonna be much wider, gonna be allowed to have a much bigger house than these internal lots. It happens all the time.
The thing I can't get past is the fact that, and I don't know where intent lies, right, or the shadiness of a contractor, but the thing I can't get past is this matrix at some point was acceptable by city staff. And that's the message that got sent. I, you're right, the underlying or the underpinnings, I, I don't know. But the thing I can't get past was, we asked the city, they had input on this matrix, they said it was fine. That's the, that's the thing I can't get past.
I mean, I'm in agreement. If, if the story was that the developer produced this matrix and there was no confirmation that, that demonstrated city staff involvement, I would feel very differently about, you know, what I'm, at least what my opinions have been thus far with this. But it's the, it's the staff engagement that I think leads me to feel like there needs to be some common ground.
I agree. I don't like it, but I agree.
I don't like it either.
Right. And that's why I was suggesting do, do something like at thirty-three percent. So, it's closer, but not to the point where we're doing different ones for different lots.
But you've already got different ones for different lots. I mean, as it stands today, like it or not, this PUD will always have some form of a matrix that has different percentages for, for different lots.
No.
But you've already got some built that has forty-one percent.
Right, but it wasn't permitted. The PUD has it at twenty-five percent or thirty percent blanket.
I agree with the document, but the development says, "Look what we did. This exists."
So, if I had like, say, something at Watermark or somewhere else, right? And I get a, a design for a house comes in and then I say, it's save the lots for thirty percent for the PUD. And I look at, say, thirty-five percent. Okay, whatever. And I sign off on it. And they go to get a deck. They probably, they can't get their deck. They're over. Even though I made the mistake to go thirty-five percent, that doesn't allot them more space later on.
It doesn't, but you're still gainfully employed. Would you be gainfully employed if you continue to behave like this?
Right.
I wouldn't be if I were somebody else if I did stuff like this on a regular basis. I don't know, I don't care. I don't know who did this or how this happened. It's irrelevant. It's stuff that none of us can control. Somebody made a mistake. Somebody went outside of procedural practices I'm hearing. I've been in multiple leadership roles in the past. If one of my staff members did this, I'd own it. My company made the decision. We did it. We'd accept it. And that party would probably no longer be part of my team, or we'd at least have a strong discussion around it.
Right.
But you'd still own it and, and live with it.
It's more of a principle.
And that's the point.
Right. And this point needs to be legalized.
I agree with all your comments. It's a maintenance nightmare. Things happen, life happens. It's just hard for me personally.
But it's also the context of this, this development. I mean, from the start of this development, it was recognizing a variety of goals from, from the community, from the city, from the neighbors, protecting natural resources. So, like, there was this inherent flexibility and unique aspects of the site when this was developed. And so, if I, if I'm a resident in this development, you know, I, I should have an appreciation that, yes, my, the rule, ru- rules for me apply slightly differently than the, the neighbor across the street or my neighbor right next door because that was necessary for this land to be developed in a way that protected some of the existing site features.
I do also agree it needs to be documented properly and recorded properly so that's properly disclosed. So, when new homeowner comes in and builds X-house and he's at thirty-five hundred square feet, he's not getting the patio, he's not getting a deck, he maxes it out. He needs to understand that this is what it is.
And the question, for those that have twenty-five or twenty-four percent that have been put below the city standards, what do we do with those individuals?
What do you mean, when they ask for a deck?
Right. Because they're below what was approved. Because they should be getting their, at least twenty-five percent, if not thirty percent.
Well, in my opinion, I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I think that for the same reason that the owner of the built property that was built to forty-one percent will never be able to come in and ask for a, a deck or an expansion or other pervious surface improvements. It seems like for those properties that were developed at twenty-five percent or twenty-four percent, it was built and sold that way and it, and it's what factored into the overall development of the site to, to meet a desired percentage.
And then, what would, assuming that we don't pass this matrix, whatever may happen, but as it currently sits at the current percentage, and I go to, say, get a deck that comes in, when I go to write their approval or denial, what's my justification?
I think you would reference the amended PUD that, that includes this matrix and demonstrates a subtotal of overall average of thirty percent. And it shouldn't be a surprise to that landowner because it would seem that if we amend the PUD that notice needs to be sent to all the existing homeowners and also needs to be included in the disclosure agreement for future buyers of the, of the vacant lots. Just like the original PUD would have needed to be in the disclosure. Right? But now, it's got clarity around the standards with regard to the pervious, impervious surface. That's, that's a response.
I had lucky responses. I think it's well pointed.
I just need to disagree with that. And the reason why I say that is the, the first few homes that were built that were following the, the coverage ratios that, that this, that was approved by council, they purchased those homes with those expectations that everyone else was going to have the same pervious area. And so, it, it just is kinda like an expectation thing. So, for them to be limited, the original homeowners that had the, followed the ratios, for them to comply with it and then the other ones to get the pass and, and then continue to be limited by the future lots, I see that problematic because that impacts the value.
So, is that, is that true that the matrix was, was produced after homes were built?
Twenty sixteen versus twenty fourteen.
And two years.
And for me, it's problematic because if I get one in today, say tomorrow, and they ask for a deck and they have twenty-four percent, I don't know if I should tell them yes or no. Because the, the letter of the law says thirty percent currently, well, twenty, it's really confusing, but just say thirty-five for now, or thirty percent, excuse me. If I were them, I would say that's unacceptable. I want my zoning standard upheld. I, I don't recognize this matrix. And so, I mean, this kind of pushes the, the urgency of having something at least done on this particular issue. Because, you know, when that happens, we're gonna have those issues. And I'd rather clarify that so that we have something, whatever the solution may be. I don't know if I have a perfect solution at all. But whatever the solution is, that we get something on the books that's legal and right and goes through the process and I can speak to it with confidence.
But if that situation did arise, wouldn't they have to come here for a variance?
Well, that's the question.
Well-
So, we just wanna make sure it's this ordinance, whatever ordinance we come up with is documented and, and legal. So, we don't have this question is the goal.
So, to address your concern, it could be a scenario in which you, you said that all lots can have up to thir- up to thirty percent impervious surface. But we won't be able to get to an overall average of thirty percent for the site, right? Because there's already some that exceed that. So, then, so then, the question is, how do you? Because if you apply a global, a global thirty percent requirement to all sites, that gets us back into the case where some of these home square footages have to reduce significantly. And so, you've got this disconnect in terms of the character of the community. Because, right, if you're gonna, if you're gonna force some of these, some of the square footages go from forty-two down to thirty, you're reducing it by a quarter. Isn't that, is my math right on that?
No. For, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but number, lot number five, lot size is ten thousand square feet. Somehow, the allowed maximum square footage is thirty-two, forty-seven. I'm not sure if that's forty-two percent. Because if I look at, if it's thirty percent, it should be a three thousand square foot lot. Which going from thirty-two to forty-seven to three thousand square feet, isn't that significant of a change in my mind.
Okay, so you're, you're allowed matrix square foot, that's actually the square footage of the impervious surface. Right?
I believe so.
That's not the home size.
Right. Because the, I mean, I'm not too familiar with really large homes because I don't live in one. But I don't know what a five thousand square foot home looks like.
I think I was reading that different, maybe because it was the example that you had using a, a thirty-two hundred square feet down. For some reason, in my mind, was that, that was the home size.
Well, that's the impervious-
That's the, that's the amount of impervious surface that you're on.
Patio, footprint.
Right.
I just think the best way to, the best thing to fall back on is the impact on the environment. I, I feel as though that's what we, that's all of our responsibility and our goal is to create, beautiful places, but also protect our environment and our wetlands and our ponds. And so, if for some reason any of that is compromised, we always have that as our backup. Even regardless of what was previously agreed to. Is that maybe easier said than done?
I can't disregard that. I, I agree with you that in terms of our, like, aspirational goals, but it just feels like the situation is a result of, of some key steps along the way that
They're all calculated.
That provokes some compromise in my mind. So, I, I do like where you're going, though, that but it's all back off of my comments that said, you know, there is a context in which things were approved. So, if, if a site was approved with twenty-four percent or twenty-five percent, then that's what they should be held to. I think it would be reasonable to think for those that have been built to a percentage less than thirty percent, that they're, they're still, they're held to the thirty percent. Right? So, that gives them flexibility. That's, that's what is on the record in terms of the staff report as being be understood, approved. It's, it's possible that, that city staff at that time communicated to the planning commission that that's consistent with the residential zoning, even though at the time residential zoning was twenty-five percent on the records. I mean, we all know that we rely on city staff and staff report.
PUDs change.
I don't necessarily, you know, have in the ordinance to fact-check all the, all the statistics that are presented, especially, you know, when it's discussed in the, in the nature of the conversation.
Can I interject? What we would recommend is that continue this until the next meeting because we just were double-checking some math. And on like lot number four, if you divide thirty-two, thirty-six by ten thousand fifty-eight, it's not forty-two percent, it's thirty-two percent. So, to make sure that the planning commission is, has all the information correct, we'd like to just continue this in the next meeting and double-check those, those numbers. Because it, it may be that we're not that far off. Because, yeah, if you're going from forty-two to thirty percent, that's a significant change, but maybe it's not. So, let, and then I also wanna figure out, you know, to help with the story to- So let, and then I also want to figure out, you know, to help with the story to figure out when these houses were built, and when these emails were going back and forth, that might help as well.
I'd, I'd be comfortable with that, continuing the discussion. I, I'm hopeful, though, that some of the context that we talked about tonight helps, in terms of, even as you look at some of the fact checking, that or understanding some of the history about how this, this development came, came together, I think was a good, a good discussion for tonight, and, you know, if you're able to dial in on what some of the math and some of the numbers are, you know, perhaps our next discussion will be a little more abbreviated. Unless, of course, we have to catch Todd up on everything we just talked about.
One was built in twenty fifteen, the rest were built in seventeen and eighteen. And the average foundation size is about thirteen hundred, there's a couple of about close to twelve hundred.
Again, I, I know I mentioned this before, but I'm stuck on the staff getting, if you could do something to alleviate that, that staff said it was, was involved in the decision. I mean, if you can come up with something that would get me off of that, and that'd be awesome, too.
The email chain won't help you. And the, I mean, I could see the logic of thirty percent of the site development, and then trying to be creative with the design layout of the subdivision. Usually you take these things to commission and council, and have them give you a thumbs up, so that you can do it right. And that's just my planner's opinion.
All right, well, I think we covered a lot of ground tonight, and so this is a discussion item, so we're, we're not seeking formal action tonight, right? So, you can take the feedback and sort of craft a story, and summarize some, some more of the facts for us next time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to the next item, then. So last discussion item for the night is the street slash pedestrian design.
Yes. So I've been doing this for seventeen some years, and I have a, when I started seventeen years ago, computers weren't really that big of a thing, so all of my information is in this file. And I was going through the file, my files, the other day, and I came across this presentation, which, again, seventeen years ago, I totally forgot where it came from. But I thought it was really interesting and pertinent to this discussion in Victoria. So I thought I would put it on a light agenda for tonight, and see what you guys think. So, here we go. So, why is it important to accommodate pedestrians? Because we're all pedestrians. Because it will make roads safer, because many cannot drive, because it's good for business, because other modes depend on walking. People seek out streets like this. But we've built streets like this. Roadway design and other factors that affect walking: roadway width, site distance, access management, site design, street connectivity, land use, and parking. Take a tired, five-lane commercial strip, and voila. So with just a little landscaping, you could make a big impact. Here we show the bike lanes, the median, the center turn lane, in the middle, on-street parking. Choosing the appropriate street width, like road diets, dedicating space to other uses. Early examples created bike lanes. Changing a four-to-three-lane conversion also creates space for crossing islands. This is really helpful, because pedestrians, they only have to look one way, then they have a little safety zone before they have to cross another one. Skinny streets preserve valuable space for better uses. And by the way, our standards, I don't know if you know, but our standards in our residential streets are twenty-eight, which is really small. Fire department doesn't like them, but it's, it's very good for the environment, better, more efficient use of land. So that's a positives. Design a wide street poorly, and it's intimidating. Design a wide street well, and it works. People drive, where will we park all these cars? This, I thought, again, a pertinent issue. Surface parking lots are inefficient use of land. Parking garages are more efficient, but they don't have to be ugly. Requiring ground level retail is one way of making parking garages a little more attractive and pedestrian-friendly, making more activity on the sidewalks. Parking on or off-street. On-street parking, there's a lot of pedestrian advantages to having on-street parking. There's an additional buffer width, and traffic calming, slower speeds when you have on-street parking. And the CBD, the, even they, they call it a CBD. And a central business district commercially viable, it gives access to more destinations. There's an incentive to oriented businesses to the street, again, providing that if you have the parking on the street, it allows the, the customers to come from the street, so businesses are more likely to design, have an entrance to the street, which ultimately makes the whole street work better. It reduces the need for off-street parking and driveways to access off-street parking. And it increases activity on the street. Again, going back to security, there's a number of positives about that. A good street accommodates multiple uses, many uses, so you've got pedestrians, you have the parking, you have the bikes, and you have the traffic, in this example. We used to build great streets, but things have changed. Our task is to create communities, not just move people and goods. So, and I, I thought that was very simple, and gets to the point very well. So anyways, any comments? It really wasn't a discussion item, and I don't know, I already know where to put it, so I just put it here.
I saw a visual. A lot of this is dictated by use.
Right. And the use and the parking go, and the street design go hand in hand.
Yes.
Right. So, anyways.
Well, I'll add that I think that the the interesting aspect of everything that you described there, there are, there are mechanisms to guide for that. Right? In terms of whether it's the functional aspects of some of those things, you know, as tools for how it works, in terms of where there's space dedicated for the various functions, or modes of transportation, or, you know, the desire for medians down the middle, or for landscaping, or, you know, wider sidewalks, I mean, all that stuff, there, there's the ability to, to guide, not just from a functional standpoint, but also from a character standpoint, and how that contributes. Whether we're talking about central business district or otherwise, you know. Good stuff. Is that all you had for that item? Is there any other questions or discussion items?
Thank you for sharing, I really liked it, especially the parking. Stack it up, we need better parking here.
Okay. Next item is council meeting updates. Anybody have anything to add while I grab myself a coffee cup?
Sure. So at the, January fourteenth, just last night, council meeting, they approved the Astor Trail variance that was at your meeting in December, I believe, or maybe even November. I think it might, might have been November. But he was subdivided a lot off of Lake Virginia, and he needed a lot with variance, so they approved that, didn't have any questions. They had a little presentation on the sidewalk issue. I don't know if you've noticed, but in the downtown, there's a number, little tiny numbers that are painted on the sidewalk. And they had bar engineering, I believe, was a consultant, to go around and figure out what are non-compliant with ADA requirements. And so they completed a study. They concluded that there's about two hundred thousand dollars worth of work to bring it up to ADA compliance. But we're, we don't have to do it all in one night or one year. We could do it over a period of time, as long as we have a plan to do it. And that's what we're doing. Let's see. And then they also had a discussion with, about the intersection of eighteen, eleven, and forty-three by the Lions Park and the church. And right now, it's a, I believe it's a a stop sign on going from eighteen to forty-three, and then eleven is through. And there are some discussions at the, because they're all county roads, that the county is going to be paying for half of the design studies. They're looking at different alternatives, either a four-way stop sign there, stoplights, or a roundabout. And so we're just starting the process of looking at that. So I think that's it. And there is no, that was the only meeting between your last meeting and this one, so that's why.
Thank you. Uh, next item is miscellaneous. Designing downtowns. Is that a discussion topic?
Not necessarily a discussion topic, but I just, again, ran across the ULAI book on designing downtowns, and I, there is two chapters. I think I, I mentioned in my staff report that there's, it's a three-hundred-and-seventy-page document, instead of sending you the whole thing. There is just two chapters that are talking about design. So I, I, I thought I'd include that to start the discussion, start you guys thinking about designing of downtowns, and designing of the thirteen-and-a-half acre development. So that's why I included it, and I don't know if you need to have any discussion or not. I do have one other item, that Doug Reader, city interim city manager, requested me to ask you, and I didn't know if I should change the whole agenda when the, or just add this to the miscellaneous. So anyways, as you probably know, we're hiring a new city manager. Like, I'm kind of excited, because we have forty-three applicants, which was quite high. And the process is that our consultant is going to whittle that down to ten, and then bring those ten to the city council, and the city council will review those ten applicants, just the applicants, not the people themselves, applications, and then whittle that down to five. And then they have two days set aside, February eighth and February ninth, to interview those five candidates. And they have it so that the city council is going to be reviewing them, the staff is going to be reviewing them, and then they also want a community group to review them. And the community group would be involved on Saturday, and it goes from eight-thirty to one o'clock. You would interview all five of the candidates. And what they're, Doug just told me right before the meeting, is that they would like to do is get one person from the planning commission, one person from the park and rec, one person from the finance, and then they'd have five people chosen from each of the five council members to serve on this community group. So, your task is to find one planning commission member who wants to sit in these interviews with the five potential city manager candidates on Saturday, February ninth, from eight-thirty to one o'clock.
When will the final decision be made after that?
So, the idea, the, the ideal situation is that the city council makes a kind of informal decision that day, on February ninth. And then they give direction to, with a consultant, to work on a salary package, and probably give them a couple weeks to, or a week to decide, to go back and forth, and then have the city council officially approve it at one of their meetings.
Are all five together at one time?
At some points, yes.
I don't find that authentic, but that's just me. I don't, I don't know how else you do it, but
At the, the City of Excelsior, for, when I applied for the city planner there, they had, it was a two-part interview. The first part was by yourself, and then the, the next, the second round, you had a lunch with the other candidate, with all the staff members. And you'd sit in this long table, and halfway through lunch, the two candidates would cross and talk to other staff members. So, yeah, it's a lot of fun. I spend most of my time listening to see what the other person was talking about.
So, all right, does anybody have interest?
I'd have to check schedules, but if, I, I mean, I can do it. But I, I still have to confirm schedules in the real world. No, not, not this isn't the real world, but that's Super Bowl weekend, too, right?
Oh, it's the third. February third.
Mary Joel's on top of it.
Who's playing?
I'll, I'll check schedules and let you know, Pat, if, and Paul, if I, if I can be available. Tendative, yeah.
Right. So the, the planning commission should pick one, and then if, if somebody, if Bob can't make it, then maybe there's an alternate or something. I don't know.
I can't.
I have no experience in job interviews from that, unless I'm being interviewed.
I really, really, really hope Bob can make it.
Yes. Well, now, you know, is there precedent for appointing someone who isn't here?
It's all the time.
If for some reason Bob can't make it, but Bob is going to make it, he'll volunteer to be first runner-up.
Thanks.
Bob? Check your calendar, man.
I hit the road these next couple weeks for my job, so. Should be, I should be, I'm pretty confident I'll be, I'll be around, but, but I just can't commit.
It's all good.
Thanks.
I have a question for miscellaneous, is this okay, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Any update on the parking committee? What's going on? What do we, what was our resolution?
Right. So, a little summary, Laura can pipe in as well. But they had the, the three task force meetings, and as you probably can imagine, everybody didn't agree on all the different type of solutions. So, the consultant is drafting a, a report, and basically what they're going to do is have a list of solutions that there was a majority agreement on, from that task force, and a list of solutions that there were some mixed support for. And basically bring it to the city council, I think, on February eleventh, some, that, that meeting, and make that presentation. Ultimately, it's the city council that decides on what they want to, to do.
It just seems logically it should come here first.
You know, when we came up with, it probably, it may, you know, oversight on my part, that what we tried to do was to have a da- task force made up of planning commission members, two planning commission members, council members, residents, business owners, and thinking that that was a pretty good perspective, a broad base. But when you, when I looked at a number of other parking studies that were done, they included the general public, too, to get more of an input, because parking is such a a lot of different strong opinions on it. So, I don't know what the best route would have been, but that's the route we took. And that's why, you know, I, at one point, we decided, should we bring this to planning commission? And we, staff said, no, because that wasn't what was introduced to the city council, so we're following that route.
Just to get the resolve, it's a hot topic, I hear about it a lot. As we all do.
Yeah. We could, we'll, we can send the report out to the Yeah, we could, we'll, we can send the report out to the planning commission as well, right? Yep, when we send it to the council.
That'd be a good idea.
Yep.
I would say there's probably no big surprises. I think, is it okay if I speak on this spot?
Yeah.
I think that there was a large majority of people that acknowledged there needed to be a net new parking, not just additional signage, which additional signage that helps people know where signage is, is an important part of creating awareness and helping alleviate some of the parking problems. But figuring out how we create net new is the next step in my mind. So, would you agree?
Yeah, I, I think the, the, we had a questionnaire, went out to the, the task force and we asked specifically about coming up with new parking, more parking. And it, it seems like that the theory is if we're going to do more parking, it would be some type of structured parking, either underground like they did the flats or, or parking ramps. And it would be part of a development so that you would have some TIF monies to be, help with that construction. It doesn't have to be part of like, like the flats, just because if you do a TIF district and you have new development, it doesn't, that parking doesn't have to be right at that development, it could be elsewhere in that district. But they also looked at, okay, so that it would be some type of, the business owners, existing property owners would be participating in the financing of, of some of it, because it's a benefit to them. And then the maintenance costs would too, would be probably be the, the city and the business owners, property owners, I should say, participating in the maintenance.
We're ready for it.
Anybody else have any miscellaneous items, or did you have more on that?
Well, I just think there's a great concern about the parking demand that the cream of building is going to create. Certainly the business owners that were part of the planning, the parking commission, they're very, very concerned. So time is, time is of the essence for us to figure this out. Yeah, it was good to hear their voice, it was.
The borough lucked out with the facility that was already there and that they could make parking spaces smaller. They really lucked out.
I have another miscellaneous item, which I'd just like to, to share a little bit about the Granicus app. So I think it's good if we can look, because at least a couple of us, it's not working on our iPads. So if we could just look in, into that. But I also just wanted, it sounded like there was some on the commission that weren't, neither weren't aware of the app or didn't have access to it. So that's really my main reason for just talking about it among us. So for, that, I think it's important that you're aware that it's a, it's a tool available to all of us. And so maybe we first sort of check on the technical side of, of making sure that it works. Because it really is a, a really streamlined way where it's got all the city media, city meetings catalogued and all the attachments there, it's not about going to a website, it's literally just going into the app. And you can, I often use it to, to take notes or to, you know, sketch on things and highlight things as, as I'm doing review. But then what's nice is that, you know, I can go back and, to a meeting that I was a part of a year and a half ago and all my notes are still there and all my, you know, markups and highlights and stuff, you know, so it serves as a good tool to combine things, aside from, you know, attachments on the email or, you know, attachments on the web that you're not able to, you know, connect information with, so. I know that it works on, well, it's always worked on the iPads. I don't know if it's cross-platform or not, but it's been a really effective way to also not walk around with large packets of, of information, which we used to do, but that got to be a challenge over time, so. Just some thoughts to consider for those of you that are interested.
Thank you.
Other than that, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Maybe we could just.